Y'all ready? Okay. Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, September 7th, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, there's one item that we need to add, and that's going to be a proclamation, and that's something that we'll do first thing. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
You have a motion by Mr. Basler. Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
This morning, we're doing a very special proclamation, and this proclamation is in recognition of Ms. Nerma Williams. And Ms. Williams, are you here today?
Yes, ma'am.
This is a very, this proclamation, I am so pleased to present to you, and I'd like to read it for everyone, and then ask you to come forward so that we can have a photograph taken with you, and even give you a few minutes to say a few words if you would like to. This is in recognition of Ms. Williams for her outstanding achievement in earning her GED. Whereas Ms. Williams left high school in 1945 to marry and to raise a family of accomplished, educated, and successful children, and despite not attaining a high school diploma at the time, managed to instill the importance of education in her children, seeing to it that they all attained higher education, including a daughter who is an educator, a son who works as a financial analyst and bookkeeper, a son who is a retired principal and pastor, and a son who is also a pastor and an associate at DeKalb College. And whereas in the early 1950s, Mrs. Williams became a missionary in the Straight Life Church, as well as served as Sunday School teacher, church secretary, song leader, choir member, and musician, and in 1969 was appointed to the position of state mother by Bishop H.L. Clayton, and served the ministry in that capacity for the following forty years, responsible for all of the missionaries and women in leadership positions. And whereas throughout these years, Mrs. Williams maintained a strong desire to obtain a high school diploma, such that in 2000, with the support of her family and friends, Mrs. Williams embarked on a decade-long journey at Griffin Technical College to earn her high school diploma. And whereas Mrs. Williams was recognized with several awards while attending Griffin Technical College, including the Central Georgia District's Eagle Award for the 2008-2009 school year, and the President's Excellence Award, and whereas at the age of eighty-one, Mrs. Williams graduated from Griffin Technical College on August 12th, 2010, with her high school diploma, after having attended classes for the previous ten years, working diligently to satisfy the stringent requirements. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation to Mrs. Williams for setting such a fine example for today's students, both through the values she passed on to her children, and through her own accomplishments of the importance of finishing school, setting goals, and working hard to achieve them. The Board also hereby extends its congratulations to Mrs. Williams for her outstanding achievements and her contributions to her family, her church, and this entire community, the seventh day of September 2010. Congratulations. And I know you, according to what your family said, you didn't want to make a big deal out of this, but this is a big deal, and you certainly serve as an inspiration to so many, and I hope that you will go and share your story and encourage others to follow in your footsteps. I'm so very proud to have you here this morning. If you'd like to say something, if you would step to the microphone.
Good morning. I do thank God for allowing me to come, and I thank God for all of you that will have me this morning, and my son who is so diligent, always trying to help and encourage me to do things I need to do. But I would like to say about school, I always wanted my high school diploma, but my husband gave me ultimatum in 1945. I went to school here in Griffin a little while at Fairmount, and at the end of that school year, I went home, and he asked me to marry, and marry him now, and he said, "If you don't, I'm leaving Georgia, and I'm not coming back." And I thought, "I better not let this guy go. I better hook him while I can." So we got married, and in those days, they weren't teaching you like they teach you now, how to keep from having babies and all this help they got. First thing, I know we started having babies, and from then on, it was babies, babies, babies. And so I knew I had to see about my children, so I just sort of gave it up for a while, but it still stayed in the back of my mind. So when they all got up and got grown, overgrown, and my daughter, she's the last one, got off school and went back to school, and she got, finished her college degree, then I thought, "Well, it's time for me to do something for myself." And I went over to Griffin and enrolled, and I didn't have idea it was gonna be that long, not at all, not at all. But I had in mind to stay and complete it, 'cause I believed that I could do it, through the help of the Lord and others, and I did. I started, I believe it was 2001, and I wasn't there thinking about I would be there till 2:10. But it, after, the more I stayed in it, the better it got to me in my mind, the stronger. It didn't matter what it take, if it, wouldn't matter how long it took, I had in my mind that I had to do this, and so the Lord blessed me to do it. And I'm thankful I passed my test on March the 24th, 2010, and I thank the Lord for it. And I was so happy when my teacher called me, Mr. Grubbs. He couldn't wait either, he's happy as hell, 'cause I'd been in his class so long, and he called me, and I said, "I know you ain't calling me," and he said nothing bad at all. And he said, "I couldn't wait," and I was so happy, and I'm so proud today, and I thank the Lord, and I'm glad to be here, and thank the Lord for all of you, whatever you're doing for me. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Any Board member have a comment you'd like to share?
Well, I think it's a huge achievement, and I'm proud of you for doing it. That's a huge achievement.
Thank you.
Never too old to learn.
Never, never, never.
That's right.
I was, I was an inspiration to so many, so many folks. God bless you, and it's quite an achievement.
Thank you so much.
And also, I'd like to, what they've said, persistence pays, and obviously, after raising all those children and providing for them to get their education, and then you still didn't lose sight of the fact that you wanted an education. That is most important, and that certainly is an inspiration, and should be an inspiration to many others, as far as you don't get too old to learn. And you're certainly an example for so many today that need to hear your story.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Williams, when I was listening to BJ read all your accomplishments, I couldn't help but thank all the life experiences and everything that you accomplished with your kids getting through. They probably shouldn't have gave you a GED, probably should have gave you a doctor's degree. You've accomplished a lot in life, and I'm extremely proud of you.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you.
We'd like to present you with this proclamation.
All right. Okay.
a Board, is present proclamations to outstanding citizens in our community. Moving on in the agenda, we want to go to administration, and the first item is going to be a resolution requesting acceptance of the Council of Juvenile Court Judges of Georgia grant, and our presenter is Ms. Sandra Reagan, Life Management Solutions, exhibit number one. Good morning, Sandra.
Good morning. Hope you guys had a great Labor Day weekend. In October of 2009, we received the grant in the amount of $7,500 from the Council of Juvenile Court Judges. These grants, we've been receiving for the last twelve or thirteen years. We received additional funds in February, and this is some additional funds in August that I would like to request your approval and acceptance of, and approval of a budget amendment.
No match required?
No match is required.
Any questions or comments from Board members?
Please approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to SPOS, the first item is a resolution awarding the bid to furnish design-build services for an elevator at the Locust Grove Recreation Center. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, exhibit number two. Good morning.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. Seal bids were solicited to furnish design-build services for an elevator at the Locust Grove Rec Center. We received three bids. Staff reviewed the three bids, however, one of the bids was deemed non-responsive. Staff recommends awarding the contract to the low bidder, Nels and Associates, in the amount of $83,515. Funding for this is available in the SPOS III Locust Grove Rec Center account.
I know you have, of course, you've looked over both of the bids. Why was there such a huge difference in the bids?
It was a design build. What we did is we were putting an elevator shaft on the exterior of the building, and again, it was a design build. The criteria that we gave was the size of the elevator that we wanted, and what we wanted the outside of the elevator shaft to look like, we wanted it to match the existing building. From that point, it was up to the contractor on what they wanted to do or how they wanted to do it.
Does any Board member have a question or comment, Mr. Bowman?
What, do you have DCM's price in your work there?
No.
What deemed him non-responsive?
Bid bond. Lack of, lack of bid bond.
But we don't know what his number was. He's, he's, he's been a local contractor, actually, Chris Martin, born and raised here in Henry County. I just wondered why, if no bid bond, that would make him non-responsive. But the chairman is correct on, it would seem that maybe that large of a difference, and trust me, I understand design build, but curious as to what we put in our package would cause rainfall, who I do not know, to be, you know, almost double. I would like to know, though, what DCM's number was, if they actually opened it and looked at the number, just for reference, just for reference.
And again, the criteria, excuse me for interrupting, the criteria was a 2,100-pound elevator, okay, two floors, two stops, okay, the bottom and the second level.
Hydraulic, just a pumper, just, that's $30,000 for the elevator.
And again, the number that's here, okay, the low bidder was in line with what we thought our budget was, so it's not...
If not, Mr. Holder, since this lies in your district, I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is also under SPOS Capital Projects, and that will be a resolution approving change orders for the parking deck project, and that's exhibit number three.
Contaminated soil was encountered at the parking deck project in downtown McDonough. We had a Phase II environmental site assessment done to confirm the extent and what the contaminated soil was, and how we had to remediate the problem or getting rid of the contaminated Included in the change order is the removing of the contaminated soil and replacing the contaminated soil with imported dirt, okay, that was, that was suitable. The change order number one is for $26,250, which is for the site assessment that was done by Piedmont Engineering. Change order two is for $57,848 for the remediation or the removal and the replacement of the material. And change order number three is for $14,303 for a concrete pipe, an old existing concrete pipe, 55 feet of 36-inch pipe that had to be removed and replaced at the Lawrenceville entrance to the parking deck. And funding is available for this, for these change orders in the SPOS III Parking Deck account. Questions?
Questions? I see everybody smiling, so we'll start with Mr. Stamey.
On the, on the concrete pipe, if I'm mistaken, Terry, we shared that with City McDonough, don't we? That stormwater feature?
The stormwater line that got replaced that we shared in was north of this. It came down the street and then turned and went north. This was up above that, so this is separate from that storm drain system that we shared with McDonough. It was up above it.
This does not tie into this?
It does tie into it, but it was not part of that original storm drain installation that we did. But it does tie into it. It was a section that McDonough was thinking at some point in time that they were gonna replace in time, but just haven't done it yet.
I mean, Ron, have you had an opportunity to talk with anybody from the city about participating on this change?
Yes, sir. And with the, and I haven't gotten all the way through the process right now, Commissioner, but with the change order, the $444,000, which was the stormwater that you're talking about, that stopped at Hood Street, I'm gonna add this to that. This pipe that had to be replaced was at the entrance, it's a pipe that was put in back in the 50s. The entrance off of Lawrenceville Street has what's called a heavy-duty paving section, which is 12 inches. It's eight inches of base, three inches of binder, and one inch of topping, those last two numbers being asphalt. And it's designed that way in case a fire truck, now, a fire truck cannot enter the parking deck, okay, in case a fire truck wanted to pull up to that entrance, okay, and hook into the FDC or to the, to the fire hydrant that's right there beside it.
Mr. Bowman?
Actually, we had an opportunity, Ron and I had an opportunity to meet over these change orders, and there's a couple things. One, Ron, there was two fuel tanks instead of one, wasn't there?
That is correct. When we were, this was on the east footing, which is the last footings that we had to build on the job. If anyone saw the way that it was constructed, it was, everything was precast, it was brought into the job. We started on the west side and started setting the precast, coming, working our way back out to the east. In the east, we discovered an underground tank. We had Piedmont Engineering come in, we also had another lab come in and test it to find out what the material was that was in the tanks. And the other thing that we wanted to make sure was the concentration level. While we were digging horizontally away from that, the first tank, okay, trying to find the limits of the contaminated soil, we discovered another tank. So we had to go through the same process for the closure and remediation for the first tank that we had to, for the second tank. And through all this, I have the report here that's been submitted to the State of Georgia for the tank closures on both of those tanks, and we're awaiting the final approval, but we don't see that that's gonna be an issue. We followed all the guidelines on remediating and...
And then, in this dirt, the contaminated soils has to be hauled to Griffin, isn't that correct?
That's correct. And the concentration levels, Commissioner, in the concentration, it was fuel oil. These were buried fuel oil tanks. Part of the process that you have to go through in a tank closure, you have to research the property owners and what could possibly be on that site. The conclusion was, these were buried fuel oil tanks for home heating. There was three homes that was on that property at one time, and the concentration levels of fuel oil was high enough where we could not take it to standards, what's called a C and D landfill, okay, which is your typical landfill that you take it to. It had to go to a Level Two landfill, which is a lined landfill, and the closest one to us is in Griffin.
One other, one other issue, and this is something that you and I spoke briefly about, but it was on the contaminated soils, we talked about project delay, and that there is some charge in here for project delay. The only thing that, and I draw your attention to the $57,000 change order request by Panatoni, and just below their contract amount, it says, "Change to the project schedule, zero days." So if we're not impacting the project schedule, how do we, in, how do we get into a delay issue?
The wording of the resolution, the majority of the money that's, that is for the word "delay," Commissioner, is for the remediation, for the excavating, the double handling, taking the material to the landfill, and bringing the material back in to the site.
That's all of it.
Mr. Holder?
Ron, where is the exact location? I know you said the east side's where the contaminated soil was, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that would be toward Hood Street, on the Hood Street, which would be on the north side, and then, of course, Lawrenceville Street, Hood Street. So it would be kind of the east side?
Correct.
Can you say in the fuel oil tanks, and that, I'm sure it's for fuel, but on that location back in the 40s and 50s was Mercer Truck and Tractor? And we purchased that property from a plumbing supply. My next question, which has nothing to do with this, but certainly should be relevant, is the fact that when we purchased that property, somebody should have signed an environmental estate, and that there was nothing on that property, or else a, some sort of environmental test was done. My point is, can, is there any way that we can go back and recover some of this if there were environmental issues on the property that we'd already paid for?
I'm looking into, I have a pool of records, and I'm not sure, do you know when the acquisition occurred, when we purchased that property, Commissioner?
That property was assembled over about a four, five-year period, so, maybe longer than that. So we've been planning this basically since SPOS I, but none of the, all of the properties were not available at the time. So it's been assembled over a period of time to get these property together, or these properties together. And I just think it might be good if there were environmental issues on the property and the seller had to guarantee that there were no environmental issues, and now we're looking at $100,000 worth of change orders because of fuel tanks. It's something certainly worth looking into.
I will look into that and report back to the Board.
Thank you.
Well, Tanya, I think that's probably been within the last five to six years, because Mr. Stamey and I were both on the board during the time these parcels were being assembled.
I think it was five, six, and seven, if I'm not mistaken, 2005, six, and seven.
Well, and you're probably right, but see, we started to assemble property from, basically, behind the courthouse, down to that level, probably for the last 10 years, till we got to that point, and then those, the corner lot, the straw and insurance, and the plumbing supply place, I think were the last two pieces that were probably purchased. But it's been something that's ongoing for some time, but I just think it might be good to look into.
I'll get the copy of the environmental site assessment study to the county attorney, so she has all that information.
Are there any other additional questions?
The 200, we're estimating, one of them was a fiberglass tank, it's 200, and one of them, one of them was a 200-gallon tank, and one of them was a 100 to 125-gallon tank.
One was fiberglass?
Yes, sir.
How much dirt was, contaminated dirt, you know, how many yards y'all hauled out?
60 loads. So if we're saying 10 yards a load, 600 yards.
Same, how much do you bring back in? How many yards you bring back?
Approximately the same amount, Commissioner. We didn't bring in, once we found horizontally how much we had to take out, then we started going down vertically to make sure that we had it all removed. We had four soil borings taken, where we went all the way down to the groundwater to make sure that groundwater wasn't contaminated, and again, that was part of the closure process, okay, to make sure there wasn't groundwater contamination. So to answer your question, we didn't bring all of it back in, because the rest of it was the footings and the stem walls, or was taken up in the volume of concrete, it had to go back in the hole.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving change orders one, two, and three for the parking deck, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roar. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to public safety, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to participate in a pilot project sponsored by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to study safety checkpoints. Our presenter is Lieutenant Scott Gray of the Police Department, exhibit number four.
Good morning. How are you, Madam Chairman, Commissioner? Before you, is a request approval to participate in a pilot project with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. The project will study the general deterrents, road or safety checkpoints the Police Department conducts generally anyway. In that, we'll be participating with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety also. The Police Department will receive $30,000 in project money to participate in it.
City Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you to approve the participation in a pilot project sponsored by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to use seized drug money to pay for educational training. Our presenter is Captain Jason Bolton, and that's exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Command College is a program that's associated with Columbus State University, and it offers a program that, a course of study that goes well beyond what is currently available today for law enforcement management personnel. It's basically broken up into 10 modules that are taught one week at a time over the course of two years. The department is requesting permission to use seized drug funds to pay for this. The total cost of the training is $12,700. That includes tuition, housing, and meals. We are looking to send one of the department's lieutenants to attend this training.
I always enjoy these, these resolutions. I love to see drug money at work, and I know that quite a bit of it has been used for the educational training and also for equipment for the department, and I really appreciate the opportunity to use it for something positive.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Does any Board member have a question or comment about this item?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. And Jason, before you step away, Commissioner Holder has something he'd like to say.
Jason, I just want to say thank you for the job that you do, and for the professionalism that you show for the Henry County Police Department when you, when you are on the air giving reports from the various, many times not too pleasant crime scenes or whatever, but I just want to say thank you, and you're truly a professional.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, the first item is a public hearing. Record One Incorporated of Stockbridge, Stockbridge, Georgia requests modification to multiple zoning conditions. The property is located at 130 Bellamy Place in Land Lot 33 of the 12th District. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. As Chairman Matt, this has indicated, Record One submitted an application to the Planning and Zoning Department to modify eight zoning conditions that were placed on the property at the time that the conditional use request came to you all on last May. The applicant is wanting to eliminate all eight of the zoning conditions, and they are seeking to adhere to the supplemental standards that were approved by the Board a couple of weeks ago, actually, August the 17th. The applicant, at this current time, is not utilizing the property as none of the conditions have been adhered to. So staff makes no recommendations on the modifications, but I will put on the overhead a list of the conditions that were approved by you all, and then the supplemental standards which were approved by the Board in August. I just wanted to clarify, in the executive summary, it states that a conditional use will no longer be required, but conditional uses will still be required for all record services that require outside storage. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Does any board member have a question? For staff? All right, if not, at this time, I'd like to call the applicant forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you could state your name for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Stacy Richardson, owner of Record One. I just, I don't really have anything to add, other than I'd just like the building to be a little smaller, and then for it to be approved is what we're asking for.
Okay. At this time, since this is a public hearing, I'd like to call for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request? All right, if not, does any board member have any additional questions or comments before I call for a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Can someone correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're asking for is to basically eliminate all of the conditions under the conditional use.
That is correct.
And to comply with all of the recently adopted rules for a record service, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Bowman, I believe this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Based on the conditions that are stated here, which I will just go over for just a minute, is that it will have a fence, and the fence will have slats in it, that the placement behind the rear drip line, which means all the autos or whatever you're towing will be behind the rear drip line of the building, the, let's see, 10-foot wide portion of, well, we don't, the only place you've got, where you'd have a 10-foot buffer would be at the rear, because that goes to a commercial piece of property and not to M1. Both sides, you won't have the buffer, so you understand that, right? Okay. Towed vehicles stored within enclosed structure shall not be accessible to the public. No wreck vehicles shall be stacked, which I know you don't stack them anyway, that other outfit did. Storage of non-business-related vehicles is prohibited. Storage must be at a minimum gravel-covered, which the entire lot's gravel-covered now, so you should be okay there. You've got a 1,000-square-foot building, finished with offices and waiting area and restrooms for the people that come in, with a masonry front, can be a metal building, all the buildings in there are metal buildings anyway, but with a masonry front. The parking, I won't get into the parking, but you're basically going to end up with about eight or nine spaces. That's what you'll end up having to put in from, you know, for parking in front of the building. You okay? Okay. You look like you had a question, huh? Okay. And then, am I correct now, that the parking and the entrance to the site have to be paved, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, they can be browned as the storage area.
And the storage area is behind the rear drip line of the building, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then, as for that, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve.
You have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? Motion carries four-zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting award of a bid for the landscape design at the interchange of I-75 and State Route 20 at exit 218. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, exhibit number seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, my partners, Commissioners. Over a year ago, we received a federal earmark from Congressman Wes Moreland in the amount of $226,380 for the purpose of providing landscaping improvements at the interchange of I-75 and State Route 20, right here at exit 218. In March of this year, Henry County also received an additional $50,000 gateway grant for that same purpose, for, again, for additional landscaping enhancements at the same interchange. Earlier this year, staff put together a, actually went through the process of doing an initial concept with the firm last year, developed an initial concept, and from there, we want to move forward with the full design. So we worked with the purchasing department and put out an RFP, Request for Proposals, and staff received 12 proposals, and we did an evaluation, a team of six staff members, including myself, Planning and Zoning representative, parks and rec, which we felt was very important as they would likely be the ones maintaining this area, Splas, as well as incorporating the city of Stockbridge, and evaluated all 12 proposals, and at this time, staff liked to make a recommendation for an approval to Ecos Environmental Design in the amount of $15,000. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I want to have a comment, Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
Excuse me. That's over a quarter of a million dollars that's being spent to enhance this intersection, and I have no problem with that at all. But along our state and also our interstate system, we don't have the money to mow the grass, and in many cases, they are mowed once a year, if once a year, some maybe more. And I know it's different funding sources, but I couldn't help but make that comment when we spent, you can mow a lot of grass for a quarter million dollars, $276,000 as a matter of fact. It just seems a little bit odd that sometimes our priorities might be in the wrong place.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to award a proposal for the design of landscape improvements at interchange I-75 and State Route 20 at exit 218 to Ecos Environmental Design in the amount of $15,000, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Board of Health. I had sent all of you an email several weeks ago, letting you know that Dr. Rao had sent a letter resigning his position on the Board of Health, stating that he appreciated the opportunity to be in that position, but unfortunately, his patient workload had gotten so that he did not have the extra time to commit to the Board of Health. A local urologist, Dr. Orlando Lopez, has contacted me stating his interest to serve on this board, and that is a recommendation that I have, and I would make that to the Board and ask for a motion or an alternate to that.
The motion that should be made should be to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Rao.
Who has, I think, five years left on his term, two, oh, two years, two years left on his six-year term of office.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve Dr. Rao, I mean, Dr. Lopez, to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Rao on the Health Board.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. The motion carries five-zero. At this time, we have the approval of the June 14th, 15th, and July 6th meeting minutes, and we'll take those separately, because we have one meeting where we had a couple of Commissioners who were absent, and, well, let's see, actually, we've got two meetings on the 15th. Let me make sure I got these right. All right, we have three sets of minutes where all Commissioners were present, the June 14th, June 15th, and July 19th meetings. I do have some corrections grammatical in nature for the clerk. Are there any other changes or additions to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next set of minutes are from July the 6th. Mr. Vazler and Mr. Bowman were not present for that meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes?
Some grammatical, but you can...
Some grammaticals, yes.
And I'm in to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries three-zero. Moving on, under public comment, we do have two citizens who are signed up, and this is the time in our meeting where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting, and those comments are limited to five minutes. The first gentleman who has signed up is Mr. Edward Meek, and he lives at 129 Carol's Lane in Locust Grove, and he wants to talk about the paving of Carol's Lane. If you would step forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Before you, you have a packet of information that we prepared concerning the paving of Carol's Lane. You have also some photographs there of Carol's Lane. This is after a county scraping and one rain, and the first three photographs there show the condition of Carol's Lane after being scraped and after being, after having a rain come through. So even after we have the Department of Transportation come through and scrape Carol, grade Carol's Lane, which they've done for the past seven years that I've been living there, we have still deteriorating road conditions. There are 17 homes on Carol's Lane, and as we have letters here from a couple of the homeowners, we have children here who have asthmatic conditions, who have problem health issues. So paving of Carol's Lane is becoming more and more important to us as homeowners, because we need to see some life improvements there for our residents. The best that we've ever had was, they came through one time, graded the road, they poured one truckload of gravel over the whole stretch of the road, and consequently, all we've really ever had is them coming back and grading the road again, and every time, it's just like they're going deeper and deeper into the road, and we're past any gravel. All our gravel is washing off of this into the storm sewers, and, you know, we'd like some sort of a resolution on this. It speaks directly to the property values of our homes, which everybody knows that that's going down instead of up in this economy, but we'd really like to see this done.
Thank you. We'll provide this information to our DOT, and Mr. Holder, did you want to comment?
I would like to comment. I know normally we don't comment in the public comments section, but the proof is in the photographs, and I think Terry McMichael will remember this, he may be one of the few, but this was, for lack of a better term, a development that was not a subdivision, that was developed by Pete Yates, and you remember that, and we required the developer to build that road to county standards, not to be paved, because he was not required to pave it at that time, because it was not a subdivision. He individually planted all those lots. That has been changed now. But look at the pictures, and you will see that the problem is, where's the ditch? It's at the edge of the road, it's not at the ditch section of the road. The ditching needs to be improved, or not improved, but opened up, because if you see at the end of the driveway pipes and how far they are from the edge of the road, and you see the grass growing, in the very first photo, it shows it. So anyhow, I understand that concern. It is a dead-end road, and I have talked to the various ones that live on that road. The immediate action, I'll tell you, is not going to happen as far as the paving, if there are any millings or anything that can keep dust and mud down, that is a remote possibility, but the paving of it, it's not good. We've just got approved after probably 10 years or more, knowing that since I've been on the board, Higgins Road in Locust Grove, and it's about to get done, there's 50 houses on it. I think it can be improved, and I appreciate your coming and bringing it to our attention, because I think that certainly helps, and it lets people know that you are concerned and interested in your community. I would like for the, to enter this petition into the record. I know we haven't done it, but I would like that entered into the record, because this is a petition circulated by the residents on that road, that that road be paved, and I think it needs to be made part of the record, and I will do that to see that it's in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. The next person signed up for public comment is Rod Oglesby, Stockbridge Homes Incorporated, 106 North Berry Street in Stockbridge, Georgia, to discuss the sales office at Grove Point Subdivision in Locust Grove. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to discuss the sales travel we have at Grove Point Subdivision. The current code in the county states that sales officers can remain in a subdivision that's been developed up until it's 80% complete, or four years. And with the economy like it is, and nothing moving in subdivisions, the four years has expired on our office, and as it is expiring, and will expire on every sales office in every subdivision in the county, because of the economy and so forth. And I'm here to ask the Board to look into a situation where this time limit can be extended, and it's expensive to move these units, and if they're moved, they probably never will be moved back in. So I think it's something we need to look at, and so that we can ride out this economic situation that we've got in the housing market in Henry County. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Holder?
I'd just like to say this, because this particular situation exists in it, but I can assure you, if you look across the county, it exists in many places, and I know some of us here have real estate connections, and let's look at the what-ifs. This particular case, there's a mobile sales office. What if, in many cases, they use a model home for the sales office? Does that mean that at the end of four years or 80% completion, then they're going to have to go to a different home and set up another office? going to have to go to a different home and re, and set up another office? I'm just using these as, as the what ifs and things that we do need to look at and to address and to accommodate as many people as we can during these hard times. It may not be pleasing or aesthetically pleasing for someone in a, in a subdivision to look out and see a sales office, and in this case, they have the ordinance to back them up? Maybe so, but at the same time, that person that has that sales office there probably provided them a place to live. So, there are times that we need to look at things and try to accommodate the most we can, and especially in these hard times. So, Mr. Oglesby, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and hopefully, we can do something that will help to rectify this situation.
Ms. County Attorney, what type of action, I mean, it's a code violation, what kind of action would our board need to take in order to resolve the situation? As Mr. Holder stated, that this is probably going to occur all throughout the county in light of the current economic situation we're in.
Well, there is the option of amending the code to allow for either administrative extensions or Board of Commissioner-approved extensions, whatever the Board's pleasure, and I can get with the county manager and Michael Harris, and we can get together and make a recommendation to the Board on how best to handle these. Uh, what comes to mind is the move-in structure extensions that we already have in place on some homes. If y'all recall, the building department can make administrative extensions up to a certain point, and beyond that, it comes to the Board for approval, so something along those lines could be done with respect to that. Since it will be amending, the ULDC will require public notification and a hearing to amend the ULDC, if the Board is so inclined to do that.
In the interim, could we work with Mr. Oglesby on the situation that he has in his subdivision?
Um, I'm not sure what status, what the status is with the Code Enforcement, have they come back out to re-inspect your situation, Mr. Oglesby? Has Code Enforcement been back out on August twenty-third?
Well, they went out and, and looked at the unit, but I don't know if, whether they've been back out there or not.
Okay.
But we keep it looking good around there, keep the grass cut, and, and, and all, and it's just something that's needed to, for the, for the subdivision.
Okay.
Now, now, it was extended, we were given a, a deadline, and that was extended by Michael till, till, toward the end of this month, I think, twenty-third of, of September.
Okay.
So, the Board knows, I spoke with Arthur Williams, the Director of Code Enforcement, and Mr. Oglesby, went out and took a look at the site, and just, we're trying to work with him and ask him for an extension, a month extension, just so we can kind of look and see what's other options we can, we can look into, so. Glad to see him come here today to bring it before the Board's attention. I concur with the, with the county attorney, we can certainly go back through, and that's kind of what we're going to be discussing in a few, in a moment as well, some other items as well, so we can kind of lump those all together.
For Oglesby, until we can bring something back before the Board to look at, I think, I don't see any harm in that.
No, I don't see any harm. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, all.
Mr. County Manager, do you have any comments for public session?
Just a couple of items, Madam Chair. In my discussions recently with Michael Harris regarding some zoning issues, there were a couple of items that, for points of information that we felt like it was important to bring before the, the full commission, and Michael and Sherry will bring those items to you at this point in time.
Much in the same light as Mr. Oglesby's comments, we have a couple items that have been brought to our attention from the planning and zoning side principally, that we'd like to bring before the Board as discussion items, kind of bring you up to speed on some of the items that have been coming to, have been brought to our attention, they would like to just kind of get some input from the Board as far as what direction you'd like for us, for us to pursue. There's three items, and again, we can kind of include, now we can include Mr. Oglesby's request as well as a fourth item, you've already kind of heard some of that information. The first one is, we've recently had some requests for the location of church facilities within industrially-zoned property. The way our ordinance currently reads, and that's the first piece of paper on, on, in the stack, you'll notice, at the bottom, I've highlighted churches in similar religious facilities, and the S gives you that they are allowed in certain zoning classifications and all the residential zoning classifications with supplemental standards, and they're permitted outright in MU, ONI, C one, C two, C three, and IAC, which is Interchange Activity Center. However, they're not allowed, not currently permitted in M one, M two. If you turn the sheet over, you'll also notice that the same applies for lodges, event facilities, children and youth centers, museums, aquariums, zoological parks, and convention centers. They are not allowed in M one, M two either, so it's not just the churches. When the ULDC was crafted and adopted back in September of oh-nine, at the time, the prevailing thought was that they would not be allowed within industrial areas. And again, we've got a lot of arguments from both sides, a lot of input from both sides, and we just kind of wanted to bring it to the Board's attention, kind of get some input from the Board. If like, if something you'd like for us to pursue as a staff, to go back and look at and make some modifications to this, or, again, one way to make you aware, these are some of the requests that we're receiving, I want to, want to bring it to your attention.
Board member have a question or comment about this?
I, I know we had had a conversation because we do have, we've had some inquiries about a church that wanted to locate in an industrial area, and the facilities worked very well for new churches starting up because of the cost of renting the facility versus being in a commercial storefront, and, and the big wide open spaces are really beneficial for them to have. The other thing we talked about is that we have facilities like the ones on McDonough Parkway, where Chairtown and Hazard County Skate Park are located, and those are industrially-zoned buildings along the Parkway, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, of course, they don't look like they are because they have the brick facades, but under our current code, those types of businesses would not be allowed if they came in today wanting to occupy a building like that. So, um, yeah, if you could look into this and then bring us back some recommendations, we probably need to reconsider that, because the other concern I have with excluding churches from an industrial area is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of two thousand, which basically says that churches should be allowed in any type of, of zoning area and cannot be treated any differently than you would treat a, treat a business. So, I could see where that could potentially ca, cause us some problems going forward.
Right. And we certainly can, and, and, and we talked internally about this, we think certainly there are some, some areas where, within industrial, you mentioned McDonough Parkway, where it may be suitable for a church, however, we think there may be other areas where more heavy industrial, a lot of truck traffic, where it may not be suitable for a church, or any of the other uses that are, that are delineated on the, in the ULDC as well, so. We can certainly bring, discuss it from a staff standpoint, discuss with our county attorney, and come back with some recommendations to the Board. Just wanted to kind of bring that up and let you know, see some of the issues we're dealing with.
Even in, Michael, even in the industrial, even in the, the area where you would talk about traffic, churches are Sundays, there's not a lot of traffic in there on Sundays.
Typically, that's correct.
So, that's, uh...
And it may be a case where we look at it as, as a condition to use, apply some supplemental standards, I mean, there's, I think there's a couple of different options we can, we can consider, so, just wanted to bring it to the attention.
And I guess just to repeat what Michael said, a lot of the issues that have come up with churches wanting to locate in industrial parks...
Um, the fire department is having issues because they're going to have to sprinkle the buildings, and then parking becomes an issue, so the conditional use probably would be the preferred so that we can somewhat regulate and understand going in that they may not have adequate parking, but that's just point of information.
Thank you.
Nothing else, I will move on to the next one, and it deals with home occupation signs. And having had, we've had some requests that have come in regarding home occupation signs, and I've highlighted the area concerning principally the, the size of the sign. Right now, our current code allows for one non-illuminated professional or business nameplate not exceeding two square feet in area is permitted on the premises of a business for home occupation. And we've had some inquiries that have been raised, us asking for a bigger sign, and I think a lot of the intent of this one was home occupation, we think of with inside of a subdivision, and one of the, one of the, one of the key elements of home occupation, we don't want it to be as so obtrusive that it stands out as a business within a residential setting. Typically, when we say home occupation uses, we're looking at professional offices, accountants, things of that, CPAs, things of that nature. We have some cases where it's come up where those individuals outside of a subdivision, typically they'll have acreage beyond two acres, two, two-plus acres, five, ten acres, and they have a home occupation at their residence there within a rural residential setting, maybe a very big lot, and a case like that, a small two-foot, square-foot sign doesn't really help them much at all, so they're not able to give any indication that, that they're having, that their home business is functioning there. And again, it's, we would certainly, we discussed the option of perhaps for, you know, making a distinction between those home occupations located within subdivisions as opposed to those located in a more rural setting with more acreage, and perhaps come up with some kind of distinction between there, so we just wanted to bring that to the attention of the Board as well, as one of the other issues that have been brought up. Happy to hear any comments that the Board may have.
Any comments or questions on this item? And you'll be coming back in, what, thirty, forty-five days with these recommendations?
We'll sort of, we can, we'll come back next month, we can come back with our recommendations and discuss that with the Board.
Okay. And if y'all think of anything in the interim, after, even after the meeting, let Michael and Sherry know so they can incorporate that into their review.
Yeah, we'll discuss it again amongst staff, amongst with the county attorney, and look at other jurisdictions as well, to kind of see what they've done. The last one is, the standards for industrialized buildings located within a residential zone, or commercially-zoned property. Our ordinance currently states, and, and this, this may be more so for clarification, under residential land uses, I've highlighted the chart on page two dash sixteen, it delineates that industrial or modular homes are permitted within residential, certain residential districts, but doesn't make any other mention of them for, within, um, commercial districts. And there's no other mention really made of industrialized slash modular buildings within the ordinance. As it stands now, based on our current ordinance, it's not a provision that allows us to, to locate a modular industrialized building within a commercial land use, and I think that's the area we wanted to get clarified. This is what she's proposing. Yeah, okay. Thank you. There is some language that's been proposed by Ms. Breka Johnson, you'll see that industrial or modular buildings, that we've already kind of crafted some language that may be, may be, may be appropriate, just for your consideration. It's listed as four point oh-three point three-one, that does not currently exist, again, this is, we've kind of gone through the process, and as we looked at and discussed it as a staff, we really didn't see anything that would really take away, or why modular industrialized building would not be acceptable within a commercial setting. Certainly understand that a lot of the, a lot of the, the building methodology today utilizes modular industrialized buildings. One of the concerns that was brought was that, I think, supplemental standards or perhaps even a condition to use would be necessary to address the different types of commercial, whether it's, you know, if it's in a, in an area where it's all, it may be all wood, commercial, and i, if, if you're allowed to put anything, I think there needs to be some kind of regulations or guidelines dictating what type of modular building, or the front, the side needs to, how it needs to look. Depending on where it's located, you don't want to do anything that's going to have a detrimental effect on other commercial buildings if you come in with a, if everything in, in a commercial area is all brick and has certain development guidelines, standards, and come in with something that's of a lesser, of a lesser, lesser, lesser degree. So, that may be another area. We've kind of crafted, and Breka's crafted some supplemental language, but we're still kind of going back and forth as to whether or not we think a condition to use would be acceptable in this, in this case as well.
Any Board member with any comment or, or questions on this item? Okay.
So, what we'll do is we'll go back in, and like we've done with the industrialized buildings, we'll craft some language up and bring it back for the Board for consideration as we move forward on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
And again, we'll, we'll add the temporary construction uses as well for you, as Mr. Oglesby stated.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. County Attorney, any comments for public session?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tonight, the National Night Out two thousand and ten campaign will be held from six to eight-thirty PM at Henry Town Center located on Jonesboro Road in the lower Target parking area, and we certainly want to encourage all of our citizens to come out, bring their children. It's a great event, very festive, lots of food, games for the kids, an opportunity to meet with some of Henry County's finest law enforcement and our firefighters, and it's just a, a great event for the family and hope that you can come and join us. Again, that's from six to eight-thirty PM at Henry Town Center on Jonesboro Road. Monday, September the twentieth at nine AM, and Tuesday, September twenty-first at six-thirty PM, these are regular Board meetings. Monday, October fourth at nine AM, we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, October fifth at nine AM, we have a regular commission meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey? Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. That was a weak second, Mr. Bazler.
I'm down here a weekish.
At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So.
Have a motion by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before this Board... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holder, we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity.
We do, Madam Chair. We need to get it amended first and then do the resolution.
You can amend and do the resolution at one time.
I'd like to amend the agenda then for the two resolutions. One is a resolution to authorize the acquisition of point zero one three nine acres of right-of-way, and point zero one oh nine acres of permanent easement, and point zero six oh four acres of temporary easement, and point zero three oh nine acres of driveway easement in land lots one eighty of the eighth district of Henry County by negotiated contract to condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA sections thirty-two dash three dash four through thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
And have a motion to amend and approve that as read by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, and the other one is a resolution to authorize the acquisition, acquisition of point three six oh acres of right-of-way, more or less, and point zero one four seven acres of permanent easement, and point zero five seven six acres of temporary easement in land lots two thirteen of the third district by a negotiated contract condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA sections thirty-two dash three dash four through section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Now, if there's no further business to come before the Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Roark?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.